We'll call the board of trustees. Board of trustees, we need to order. It's Tuesday, October the 5th, 2021, 7:00 PM. This is the regular meeting of Jefferson County Board of Trustees. But we need to subscribe to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, "One Nation, Under God, Indivisible, Liberty, and Justice for All." This time we have a moment of silence. I carry firefighters, road workers, sheriff deputies. As they serve up their here of honor. Thank you. We'll call Ms. Edwards.
Trustee Ma'am.
President.
Trustee McWhale.
President.
Trustee McLaughlin.
Present.
We have more present. Okay. First on the agenda, uh, get the review of, uh, prior meeting minutes.
So through four, five minutes. To this step were in November of 2020 because I was looking for information for the, uh, AFG grant. And since I had to go listen to the minutes, I just found a transcript. And then two of them are sure to be that I transcribed for this year. Well, I'm sorry, one of them was a meeting you guys had a special meeting earlier on in the year. And then it was approved, your approval. And the second one is a shorter meeting we had in September. Since it was short, I felt I gave it out of the way. So it makes the auditors look like, at least we're trying to make an effort and trying to whittle down the stack of resolutions that we have.
Trustees, I did not get a complete copy of the minutes. Some of the soft copies were missing in my email.
So here's the same one. I think I may be the only one that, um, had, had, um, all the copies.
Well, I moved to table the approval to this to the next meeting.
These were the same ones that were brought to the last meeting out of the air.
Well, number one, one of those looks like a took the zoom transcription and put it on our letterhead. And I'm not comfortable with that with all the other issues before this board.
I did, I did those myself.
I'm not going to vote for those minutes.
So I didn't do that for the moment to do the transcription. I did those myself. Well, I, I'd just like to say I'm not going to do any more of it because I brought these so many times forward to you guys. I'm done with trying to bring these minutes to try to help you guys with these minutes done. These are your minutes for your meeting. Whether I'm responsible or not, you guys are still responsible in the end to have these minutes done. So if you don't give them to me to do, they can't get them to be done.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the meeting minutes presented in this meeting before the meeting, uh, special meeting on Thursday, March 11th of 2021, November 3rd of 2020. The regular annual work session on November 3rd, 2020. Sorry. And, uh, Thursday, September 2nd of 2021.
I voted no on approval of those minutes.
You're not open for voting, you can vote for second. Will you second, Mr. Trustee Ma'am or not?
I'm, uh, I have not read all of the, um, mark. So I don't want to move on at this time.
Okay, let's go on to the search report.
So you guys, and if I put on the table, I gave you the report, um, because, um, I didn't get the, um, my resolution to approve the last meeting. I can't, um, it's not going to be totally accurate because I don't have all of revenue into, um, input, but I need you guys to approve this resolution coming up in the meeting. So I can complete the report. I have not received any invoices and I know that to pay. I know that I've sent them out over the last six weeks. Nobody returned any invoices to me to pay bills. So the only bills I've been paying are the ones that we need to stay open, like DPNL, Vectra. The rest of them are just sitting somewhere on somebody's desk and not being approved. It's getting worse each time. Before they were giving me 26 to 50 some bills to pay at once when I send them almost every day. Now it's getting to the point where I'm not even getting any mail. We used to get mail every day. I don't know where the mail disappeared. I'm getting one or two pieces. I don't know what's going on during the township. We need to give a mailbox, um, so that I understand, um, that some stuff has been missing. We lost several items that were supposed to be delivered here. And I guess, I don't know that she's not here to ask him, but I know he had told me, asked me at one time about the vest for the dog. I don't know if they received that vest, but it didn't get here. They said it was sent here. There's some items that were shipped for, um, supplies never showed up here. I think we need to work something. If we can get our mail in a mailbox, not sitting out in the lobby. So I have not been getting any invoice. I have not, also have not gotten any calls, so somewhere it hasn't gotten bad yet, so that's a good thing. And I haven't heard that, uh, the fire chief or the administrator complain that, um, they can't use any of their accounts. So we're okay. And again, like I said, I've been paying our DPNL, our Vectra and those type of bills, our utility bill. So we won't have no problems with that. So, um...
What do we do about that, guys?
Can we get informed delivery for a commercial account?
I can find out. I don't know if we can.
You know, that is, the post office gives you an email record of the money, of the mail they're handling. So it goes through one of their process scanners. It's going, you know, it's something you can get at home, but I don't know if it's available for a commercial and especially as much mail as we get.
Good question to ask. You ask the question?
Mm-hmm. That works. The post office right now. Um, but, yeah, so our problem is I'm still not getting, that's all the mail problem. What about the invoices we're not getting? Replies back at all? I think that's a process problem.
It sounds like we, I don't know if there is a process in effect that we don't have some kind of means to have a process. But, uh, you as a department lead get a bill. We need to set up, you have that amount of days that the state repertory to tell on you that you have. Cause I've got trouble for it. If you get a deposit, you've got, what, three days to put it in the bank? Well, then maybe we need to make a policy that when the department head gets a bill, we have seven days to process that. What's he have to do? Put a fund code to it and sign it and say, pay this.
But, but we already got that on each bill. It says to do by this day. And I've got, I've got records to show that you send them back to me way past the date they will do. I mean, so they could at least, they can at least give them the fact to me by the due date. You see what I'm saying is a due date. You get a DPNL bill, it says the due date. All those bills say 30 days, net 30 days, net 15 days.
So we need to have... We need to have a policy procedure in effect so we get a handle on paying our bills on time. We don't really have that.
So that's the issue with the bills. And I guess there's nothing else I can do in this way.
Compounds. We had the daily mail, uh, when we had administrative staff. Then we had, uh, I know from looking at the bills. You've got the postmark, you've got the date of the bill. You initial it when it hits your desk. And then we've got a check and a PO once it's cut. Now, when I've done my go through and scanned the bills, cause I work for a low charges, every day's been like 10, 15 days. More to me, what would appear to be more, nothing out of place.
That's true, because those are the ones that I'm paying to make sure we stay open. I'm saying in the last four to six weeks, we haven't gotten those other bills. So what you've been looking at, like the last ones you just signed, they were okay because those are ones that, that, that haven't gone through the departments. They're not sitting on somebody's desk. I wait so long and if they don't reply back to me, I go ahead and pay a DPNL bill. I don't want to have it. I've noticed it says you're going to be cut off. I pay a Vectra bill because they will, they will send the bill late and they only have a week to pay Vectra. And then they'll send you a notice right away and then charge you a big charge. So I go ahead and pay those because the line on it clearly says in the budget, Vectra. So I know use Vectra. But if it's Oralis, I don't know which vehicle you prepare. So I can't determine the budget with mine. But I can determine DPNL because it says electricity. I can determine Vectra because it says, it says Vectra on there. You understand what I'm saying or not?
So you're saying the Oralis bill?
I just gave Oralis as a sample, but there's other ones besides that.
So they don't specify what department it is?
No, no, but now the fire department, they use their POs and they will, when they order their item, they'll say PO 27. And then I can say, okay, I know they use PO 27. But it, um, that's not always the case in some, in some stuff they order. The general fund and the road don't do that at all. They don't have POs. I gotta create a PO every time they, um, they order something.
So we need to make a policy procedure that you give it three days, seven days of the time the department head receives the bill. They process it, sign it, give it a fund code, and proceed and give it to fiscal officers who make you pay. And unless it is due in less than three to seven days or something, we need to come up with a policy procedure to get this thing cleared up before it becomes a real headache. What do you guys think?
Well, a couple of years back, I brought up the idea of scanning, having the department heads scan every bill they receive into a folder. Because if the other trustees come through and sign checks, I like to look at bills sometimes, not when I'm in the office. Sometimes I like to study them a little bit, review them. And it's not going to be that much extra work. Number one, it takes care of the issue of where it arrived. If you want to hold employees accountable for whether or not they're coding the bills or turning them in. So once it hits the door, scan everything in. And then if any trustee or we get a public records request, you can go to a folder, pull that bill, look at it on your computer. And then we've got tracking. So if there's a session, you can grab an attachment from it, email it, figure out what needs to happen with that bill and pay it. It gives us tracking. But we've also been dinged for a lot of documents.
So Trustee McWhale, um, every bill that comes in, I scan it. I don't, I didn't know you had that policy. I don't know where, if you want me to put those files, but I have them on the disc at my house. I scan every single bill that I get in. I personally get in. If Mr. Wolf or Mr., um, Chief Wright gets it, I don't give a... But I have every single bill from the day I started doing that on a, on a flash drive. If you want me to put it on a certain driver, I already do a transfer today.
And we have a policy and a time that you have.
It's not. You're right. It's no work that I do that anyway. Because if, if I scan that bill, I can email it to, I can email it to all the, um, you know, the departments. So I scan everything that comes in. So I already have that part done. Now if it goes to record to Steve or goes to Lenny, Chief Wright or anybody else, I don't have those bills.
Well, the way that I'm looking at it, we're going to have them handle the bill or annotate special fund codes. They should be doing that work and then just handing it off to you. I mean, because you've already, I know that you're documenting when it hits your desk. So you've got a pretty good...
And I also document when those are mailed when you guys sign it. I have a spreadsheet that says this is the day that it was sent out. This is the day you signed it, this is the day it was sent out. So I also have that. But in between, that's kind of sketchy. So that's something we have to look into. My last issue is, it's not an issue, but I want to let you guys know that, um, we had a binding for recovery on the 2020 audit, Michael Fine Finance for Recovery. And we received a payment today, um, of the $277, $36. I received it today and it's deposited in the account. I will send a message for that, um, finding to be cleared up. I'll send it to our legal and I'll put it in the records as the auditors told me to. So that when they're doing that audit, they can do that particular fine.
Can you send a scanned copy to the prosecutors?
He called me and that's what he told me. He hasn't been there. I will be sending scanned copy of the deposit and everything and a notebook. I think we discussed everything else in the work session. Um, if I have any questions, I'll let you know.
Trustees, we want you to make a motion to accept a fiscal officer who reported paying those.
I'd like to make a motion to accept a fiscal officer reporting, um, paying the bills, invoices, uh, and work.
I'm sending a motion. We'll call, please, Ms. Edwards.
Trustee Ma'am.
Yes.
Trustee McWhale.
Yes.
Trustee McLaughlin.
Yes.
Okay, old business. We discussed the, uh, engine tanker in the work session. Do you have any more discussion under old business?
I, I have a question on this, uh, engine tanker. Uh, we have $48,000 on cares that, uh, have that fund, those funds can use as a down payment on the engine tanker.
Another question, ma'am?
Question about the board here and...
It sounds like a good idea, but to be sure, I would check with legal. Because it is a total health and safety issue. We have purchase of vehicle with cares act money. Down payment, maybe, I don't know why I wouldn't, but I would check with legal if I were here to verify that you can do that. Especially before you give, um, the vehicle finance, if that's the way you guys want to look at that money.
Okay, um, you'll see, uh, some of the purposes and...
Knowing the, uh, as a part of that, we'll have to get that question answered. Cause there is a down payment required to achieve the prepaid discount. It's included in this, uh, proposal. So, uh, if this passes, that would be something that we'll have to, uh, cut a resolution and a PO. I get a PO together to get a check cut to go with that. And that's going to be part of, part of the process, uh, to seal the deal, so to speak. Now, once, and this is where, and once the finance option is selected, they're going to have to prepare the paperwork. And it's going to have, uh, everything in it. Uh, so this is not the agreement that's here. I mean, this is just a start.
I say we go ahead and be pending on that until this bill just comes up. If we expect, well, then we go ahead and do the down payment out of the car funds. And that, that is viewed and that cares act money goes back to the car fund.
Can you say that again, please, from a quiet stage?
All right, whatever the contract is, we'll go ahead and do the contract, pay it out of the car fund. And then if the cares act is viewed, then the cares act money goes to the car fund because it's placed at that money that we...
I mean, if, if legal says it's good to use, it's good to use. Cause either way, it's going to come out of the fire or the, whether they approve it or not, it still going to come out of the fire. And we just reimburse the fire department.
Yeah.
What do you see as down payment on here too? On this existing...
I originally thought, uh, it was going to be the prepaid discount, but I'm not clear based on my discussion. And I would expect to see that in the final finance paperwork where there's going to be something from something. But if money has to change hands in order to get the prepaid discount, it may be they want their first payment, to get that, to get that discount. But we can clarify that. That's where, uh, it wasn't clear to me because I don't have paperwork that spells that out. But I originally thought in my conversation today that it was this prepaid discount, but I'm not sure that's the case.
Because prepaid discount applies because of the fact that in a little bit odd and weird way, normally as, as residents and family members buy things, you paid this vehicle upfront and then receive it. That's why they give me a discount. There was no down payment. I didn't see any down payment in here at all. We take the, I like the idea, we're actually a good idea. So we take the 48, 444 that's left, you need cares act money. We're going to find out the down payment and then also receive the prepaid discount. So we need to first, and who wants to be lead on this? So I don't want to act as the board of trustees, but somebody needs to take the lead. Contact legal, contact Nathaniel and Anu. And can this money from the cares act be used as a down payment on his, on his tank? Get a yes or no. Once we get a yes or no, then, um, go back to, and then Jim, if you want to take the lead on that, because you're the one who had the issue, we just getting one finance company. You want to take the lead and find some different finance options, then we can do that. But, um, which one of us wants to be the lead? And I'll write Nathaniel an email. I'll copy you two on it. And then his answer, of course, will include all three of us, yes or no. I'll do that in the morning. Are you okay with that? I'll write Nathaniel an email, ask him, can the cares money be used as a down payment on this tanker? Okay with that?
That's fine. If you, I guess, trustees, do we want to set up a special meeting to knock this out by next Monday? It's going to be a 20 minute meeting.
It's a holiday.
Yes.
I mean, not for me, I have to work. It is, it is legally a holiday.
We might even pull it together for Friday. This isn't a day long to...
Okay, so...
It's not the money, we should be able to...
So let's, let's just make that stairs stepping process, Jim. I'll contact, I'll contact Nathaniel. He'll give all three of us a response. You should go do that in a short period of time. We'll get that information. You contact financing, get some financing options. You okay with that?
Yeah.
And then once we get that information, we talk, decide when we can meet and make it a public notice of a meeting.
Well...
Huh?
I have to pull out of my...
You know, yes, sorry. It's not a, like, emergency meeting, just a special meeting, yes? And I can't do 13...
No, this would be a very quick meeting, but that'll give us the time because we got to get the resolution right. I'd like to vote with the financing paperwork in front of us and just...
I agree with you. I'm right here. Yes, absolutely, yes.
Plus, if we can clarify if they need a check from us to get the prepaid discount. Now, it's not, how much it is, it's probably going to drive the fund code we're pulling from. So you good with that, Mr. Ma'am?
Okay.
Okay. So we're going to table this to a special meeting, probably be called within the next five to seven days. Depending on the flow of whether or not we get everything ready to go. But definitely before the next meeting. Everybody okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Trustee McWhale, I didn't know that, um, the resolution for the, um, the budget, for the county budget was up in the, um, that's why I didn't see it in the new business. It's up in there with the fiscal officer's report. I don't know why it's up there, but can we just move it down to where it looks for consideration?
Trustees, do all, do you have that in your packets?
Yes. Do you have it?
No, I saw it.
Yeah, I have it. The down resolutions.
Okay, uh... Okay, we talked about the, uh, purchase order for the AFG grants and the grant writers. I'm looking at the old business on the agenda. We've already discussed this. This is carrying over from that work session. Uh, new business.
I got some more old business to talk about.
Okay.
So the schedule of the, uh, another issue with the gym, the scheduling of the, uh, meetings for talking about the budget next year. We have a fire budget scheduled of the evening of October 13th. I received some, uh, invitation to a debate. I'm not going to be available that evening. Mr. Ma'am, you should receive the same invitation and be willing to go to that. Let's try to move that meeting to another day, day before, day after, some point in time. So we are available to, uh, discuss our issues with residents of the township on the evening of the 13th. I'd like to move that meeting to whatever day is good in my eyes. You okay with that, Mr. Ma'am?
Yeah.
That's two of us, a mixed majority. What day, what day is, what day is good with, uh, seeing that that trace in myself? I'm, any day, I believe I'll do the Columbus day, the 11th. We do the 14th, the day after Thursday, the 14th. Guys?
Okay, that'd be fine with me.
Okay. Same time, what do we have, seven? I have to put my notes, the time we set this meeting, so...
14?
Six, okay. 6, okay. October 14th. That'll be the fire budget. You okay with that, Tracy? Can I get a meeting?
I'll try and see. I don't, I don't think I can make that. I think that was originally the way the meeting was.
Okay, so what about you then? What, what, you mean, you need to hear?
I know you do, but if you guys gotta go on and keep the schedule, because what I really need is you guys to be on time so that I can get, have time at the end to be able to get the budget in for the new year.
Well, I, you might miss something. You see, and it shows the whole thing. How about the 15th, Friday night?
My, my whole concern is that.
Yes.
These, a lot of these budgets should be worked outside of the meeting. We should be sitting in the meetings going line for line, line for line.
Okay.
Um, so I think that the fire department sheet should get to me and we can discuss and we can get a lot to prepare so when you guys have it before the meeting, you can look at it.
We talked about that. We never got a set date. We discussed that we should have the packet of the budget ahead of time instead of, as usual, handing it to you that night. It's hard to go over all that money that's involved in the fire department and the general anything. Sit down, look at it, and make a decision on it. We need to have that days in advance when we think about it. We just talked about that.
Um, so my concern is spending, I feel I have something to do that day. Six, seven, I don't know. More than two hours. I can't spend more than two hours with that.
But you can do the 14th as long as you make it a short meeting.
I mean, the way that I would like to see the budget come before the trustees is department head gives a rough draft to their apartment along with a grocery list, uh, major capital purchases. So, okay, the fire chief wants to buy a fire truck. So the, the only discussion, it shouldn't be what line we're using for DPNL. It's plugging into the budget, you know, are we gonna deal with salaries? Are we gonna deal with big purchases, building renovations? I think that's what needs to go in there, not day-to-day expenses unless a new line item has to be created to track it or tweak it, but I agree with this line-by-line approach. It's, in the past, it's not been the idea.
I agree.
Good with that?
Okay.
So let's stick with Thursday to 14th to 6, and I don't know how we want to tell, uh, Chief Wright, but you need to have that thing to us, uh, Tuesday at the latest? What you guys, you want to, I mean, as soon as he can have that, the better. Get in front of us so we know what we're looking at, um, and have it ready for it and make it a short meeting.
So that would be the 12th, the holiday Monday?
Yes, or have it a week in advance. Have it, I don't know how far along he's with it at this point in time. Can he have it to us?
A week, because that would be disturbing.
Can he have, can he have it up Thursday, Friday, get it to us? He's not here. Can't do that.
Because I gotta get him the, what he needs, but I gotta get him.